The March 18th Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Keraway to say the invocation for us this evening.
You bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the many blessings of life. As we do our business here today and always help us to seek to do what is right and what is pleasing in your sight, we ask you to continue to bless our community and those who work, serve our citizens, especially our police officers and all our emergency service providers. In this name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a court this evening with four members present. Commissioners, you have a copy of the minutes from the March 4th Board of Commissioners meeting and the March 11th Elected Officials Work Session in your packets. If you've had a chance to review them and they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes both for the March 4th and March 11th meetings as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Do we go on that?
Aye.
All right. So approved. Mr. Johnson, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Ready for your approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Under special recognition and presentations, we have a couple of folks I would like to recognize in our audience this evening. We have a Boy Scout troop with us. And guys, if you would like to stand up and give your name and tell us what school you go to, we'd love to hear from you. Well, we're so glad that you're all here with us tonight and we hope that you learned something. We had a little tour beforehand with the troop and I think that they enjoyed that. So we also have some members of Columbia County Youth Leadership with us. If you'd stand up and give us your name and where you go to school. Glad to have you all as well. Thank you. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on the agenda has been through the necessary committees and has received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. If they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Onto the debate agenda, and we do have a couple of folks that would like to speak on our first item. So I'll call you up. Doug Thornton, are you here? Will state your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Doug Thornton. I live at 5123 Autumn Trail in Grovetown. I'm here to speak against the rezoning of 5136 Autumn Trail from residential to C2 commercial property. Last week, a few of you made the time to listen to several of the residents of the Autumn Trail subdivision and their concerns for the potential rezoning. For the rest of the commission, I'd like to represent a significant portion of our neighborhood and community to state our concerns. For those not in attendance last week, I will recap our concerns. Approximately eight years ago began the widening of Lewiston Road. As a result, several homes in the Autumn Trail and Sugar Creek neighborhoods were bought out, destroyed, and then replaced with commercial developments. Now developers are once again wanting to encroach upon our neighborhood. Many of us here, as well as over 185 petition signers, agree that the current request for rezoning should be denied. It is, if this rezoning is approved, the result will be increased pollution, increased stormwater issues, and increased traffic, not to mention dislocating a longtime resident. There are many suitable commercial lots already available in existence along Lewiston Road and near the potential rezoning area. First and foremost is the increase in pollution. Residents of Autumn Trail have seen a significant increase in water, noise, light, and physical pollution since the construction of the Popeyes Chicken Restaurant on Lewiston Road. This pollution would not only get worse with increased commercial development across the street. There's been a significant increase in the amount of litter and garbage that comes from Popeyes and pollutes the roadways and often finds its way into the Tudor Branch Creek. The parking lot lights are on 24 hours a day and can be seen through the windows of several residents at night. Car stereos reverberate on and off throughout the night, disrupting the tranquility of what remains of our neighborhood. Again, further development will exacerbate the amount of pollution in the area. Water runoff from Popeyes increases pollution into the Tudor Branch Creek and is eroding three residential properties and contaminants that spread threatening wildlife. Rezoning 5136 Autumn Trail will not only add pollution to Tudor Branch, but there would have to be a significant construction effort to divert water away from crossing the road due to the topology. This reconstruction would further affect two more residents on the south side of Autumn Trail before the water runoff would reach Tudor Branch. Finally, I'd like to address the traffic. While we were told there was a traffic study completed, it's said that some minor road construction on Autumn Trail, that traffic flow would be suitable. While the numbers and analysis may suggest, many of us can speak from personal experience, this is not true, especially during evening rush hour while people are looking for food and residents are trying to return home. Although Popeyes address is Lewiston Road, its main entrance is on Autumn Trail. From our observations, Autumn Trail is not sufficient to have two businesses exiting directly across from each other. Business patrons often miss their turn, forcing a turnaround in residential driveways. It allows unnecessary traffic further down Autumn Trail and decreases security of the neighborhood. Several times, we've seen walking patrons from Popeyes wandering the streets, littering, and even entering our properties, requiring us to call the Columbia County Sheriff. It would seem prudent that if a parcel of land is not sufficient to accommodate commercial plans, the solution should be to find a suitable parcel and not force the space to fit the plans nor drive residents from their homes. At the zoning meeting on 6 March, residents expressed concern as to why not to rezone, and no one spoke in favor of rezoning. Last week on 11 March, those of us opposed of the rezoning provided a reasonable list of concerns and have not been presented with any reasons as to why this rezoning should occur. While as a whole, we are not against commercial development, there are many other suitable parcels of land available and zoned commercial. Further encroachment into residential neighborhoods needs to be stopped. Residents should not feel financially coerced to give up their homes for the sake of commercial development. We ask that the commissioners deny this rezoning request and stop the expansion of businesses into longstanding residential neighborhoods. I bought my home on Autumn Trail for the peace, the wooded area, and security of the neighborhood. A hurricane destroyed a significant portion of my property and others in our community and county, and the county couldn't control that. Now developers threaten to destroy the land across the street, which the county can control. Thank you for your time and attention. Do you have any questions for me?
Just to be clear, this space that we're seeing, where the corner is of Autumn Trail and Lewiston Road, that space that we're looking at has a house there now, correct? Right? And that is inside the subdivision?
That's correct.
The corner that we're talking about is already commercial?
Yes.
You're not saying nothing should go there, you're just saying not this big?
Correct. I'm recommending you vote against rezoning specifically 5136 Autumn Trail where there is currently a house.
Okay.
The other lots at C2, we understand that's already a done deal.
You're asking about the one behind it? Okay.
Correct.
Other questions? Mr. DeMyers would also like to speak on this topic. You'll state your name and address for the record and you'll also have five minutes.
Of course. My name is Matthew DeMyers and I live at 333 Fairway Drive in New Orleans, Louisiana. I am not the developer of this property. I was hired by the owners both of 426 Lewiston Road, Kyoto Inc., and also Susan Heslip, the owner of 5136 Autumn Trail. They asked me to represent them in this rezoning, and there are several reasons why we would like for this property to be rezoned. As you can see on the map I'm looking at, we don't have the necessary depth for the commercial development of the current property fronting Lewiston Road. That is zone C2. We are suggesting a down zoning from C2 to community commercial as well as a residential property to be rezoned from residential to community. That will allow us to have the proper depth to deal with the grading issue, to deal with the DOT taking that already reduced the depth of the property, and also to put in shared attention along the rear to deal with some of the concerns the gentleman just had as far as stormwater control. So all of these properties have around, all these C2 properties have around, I think, 350 feet in depth. We have around 188 feet in depth on 426 Lewiston Road. And again, due to the topo concerns, to allow proper access, ADA compliance, and those other issues is the reason that we came in before the council for this. Do I have any questions you have? I'd be happy to answer.
So you're representing Kyoto Inc. and the owner of the first?
Residential property. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schotner, could you just give us a kind of general overview of?
As has been mentioned, it is a request, request to rezone from C2 on the front parcel down to a CC as well as a R1, I mean, R2 property to a CC. So it's a downgrade in zoning for the commercial property, but it's an upgrade in zoning on the residential property. As mentioned, it was requested to allow them to install a buildings, ones I believe proposed a bank. Chase Bank, the other for Olive Garden. Property line here, this is the residential property that you see on the map we were looking at earlier, where the bank and the Olive Garden sit currently, that is already zone C2. There's been some revisions to this plan. They originally showed their driveway here. They're asking that if this gets approved, that this driveway get relocated and across from Popeyes. We did go back and add some additional conditions to this. If the commission were to approve it, they have to do a full traffic study on that intersection to, kind of improvements need be made to handle the additional traffic. That condition in your packet if you choose to approve this item. That's the gist of it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
The first speaker mentioned something about runoff from Popeyes. Are the existing businesses right there in that section, are they not in conformance with stormwater regulations? Or we already have a problem with that?
I did hear that, and I have not been involved in that. That was my first time personally hearing that. But they should have built two county standards, so the Popeyes is here. There is, I believe, we don't have it on this map, but I believe there's a, if you look at our maps online, there's a blue line that runs something like that. That is not accurate at all, but there's some sort of natural draw through the area that water flows. Are they discharging their pond into that and is there damage downstream? I don't know. I'm hearing it same time you heard.
I know that's the other side of the road and a different business, but I was wondering about the topo of that whole section right there being below the grade on that.
Yeah, water's gonna go down to the creek. Yes. There's no way around that. Eventually, water's gonna go that way. Everybody's water goes to the low point, so.
That was a lot of paving. That's an extra lot to.
Yes, it is. So there are some new regulations have been put in place by the state agencies on detention. So in the past, you just had to detain to the point where you discharged no more water than you did before you developed the property. New regulations require you to retain the first inch of rain that falls on your property. So they'll have to, if this is approved, they'll have to design to that standard, the first inch of rain cannot leave that site. So that should alleviate some going downstream. Now, it rains 10 inches of rain, there's gonna be water leaving this site. That's just how life works.
What is on the other corner of Autumn Trail?
Which?
Across Autumn Trail on the same side.
That is.
Popeyes and Pinnacle Bank.
Popeyes and a bank.
Popeyes.
Popeyes is here. Over here, this is the Kroger Shopping Center. Got a couple little, I'm gonna call them strip centers, but three or four tenant buildings on the corner. I'm sure they could take that.
Now, buildings.
I'd like to hear any additional. I'm ready to. Have a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I would like to make a motion to deny the request for rezoning from C2 and R1 to CC for property located at tax map 068, parcels 095A and 096.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries and zoning remains as is.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for variance to Section 9053, property located at tax map 071, parcel 136, to reduce the front building setback to 20 feet from the front property line, subject to the condition enumerated in the March 6, 2025 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Currently, there's a 55 foot from the center line setback on this property. Chris, if you'll go to the aerial photograph that shows the school property as well, probably your first or second slide. You can look, that's fine. You can go back one more where you just were. You can see the neighboring house. The property line is very close to the rear of the house. In this instance, the backyard is not gonna be very deep, so the property, the builder's asking to request to reduce the front setback by 10 feet, pull the house closer to the road to allow a little more of a usable backyard. This request has been made by several of the properties along that stretch of this road, and it has been granted to everyone that's requested it. So this falls in line with every one of the other parcels along that road, so staff recommend approval.
You have a motion and second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Any legal matters this evening?
No legal matters.
Your request for review by committee?
Oh, ma'am.
Public comments? We have two this evening, and we'll start with Marlena Bergeron. Good evening. If you'll state your name and address and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Marlena Bergeron, 2545 Willow Creek Court. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. What a wonderful time of year to be in Columbia County. Mockingbirds singing, lightning bugs blinking, blossoms on eastern redbud trees, and pollen on everything as far as the eye can see. I love being outside and am indoors only out of protest or to pick up my library books once a week. Please remember to mark your calendars, April 6th through 12th is National Library Week. This county is safe and gorgeous. Seventh wealthiest county, the 15th largest in population with 165,000 people. We are not all going to agree on everything. With all these blessings and wealth, I ask, do we have tolerance for one another? I'll speak for the majority of library users and say yes. Commissioner Keraway, that was a lovely invocation you gave at the beginning. I often reflect on Philippians 4:8, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable. If anything is excellent or praiseworthy, think about such things. Whatever you have learned or received or heard from me or seen in me, put it in practice. I am here to advocate for tolerance at the library, to defend the library, and to update the public record on last week's library proceedings. Four final candidates will be interviewed after one rescinded for regional director to replace the director who served 15 years as regional and county director and would have retired, serving Columbia County, had it not been for the guidelines. One patron asked David Davis to step down from the board after he actively lobbied for SB 74, which would criminalize librarians. He did not. I asked the regional and county boards to have another vote on the guidelines. They did not. The lawyer on a taxpayer-funded retainer was present at the regional board. Dr. Sandra Keraway's last action as the chair was to nominate David Davis as the new chair, unaware, unconcerned, or in alignment with his support of criminalizing librarians. Hillary Millar, who publicly supports SB 74, was nominated vice chair. Latent partisan activism by library board members and the vaguely discriminatory guidelines are violations of the Columbia County Library Bill of Rights. Out of 159 counties in Georgia, I don't know why we need an additional set of guidelines filtering our book collection, nor do I understand anyone who'd want to criminalize librarians at the state level and deputize patrons and county officials elected or appointed. Imagine the stress of this, driving our librarians to quit, the reduction in services, operating hours, and fewer programs, including storytimes. I don't want any of that, and librarians are already quitting. Is that what you want? God, is that what you want? How many of you support your appointed library board members on SB 74? Would you please give me a show of hands? Do you agree Davis should be lobbying for SB 74, especially now that he's responsible for leading the board, public meetings, and authorizing book procurement funds?
We're not here for you to ask us to make motions and vote on things. Please continue with your statement.
Understood. Do we really want our taxpayer-funded police arresting librarians? SB 74 is a homegrown effort, just like the Columbia County guidelines. In all my life as a military spouse moving from Alaska to Mississippi to here, I never walked into a public library and thought it was my job to police books. When I had my son, my only job was to police him. When I served the board, my job was not to police books, but to uphold library policies and procedures. Ironically, a song by the police is called Canary in the Coal Mine, and that's precisely where we're at. Our library, just like our community, just like us individuals, is not perfect by any means. But American-made, with local and global access, assembling all our superheroes and stories together in one place, we become something and achieve something stronger and more perfect than any one individual or viewpoint could. We are good people here. We are good parents, and the vast majority of parents will tell you it's much bigger problem to keep kids off a screen than it is to keep them away from a library book. We are principled, and we do care about religious freedom, parental rights, social justice, and personal accountability. Rescind the unnecessary and unconstitutional guidelines. Speak against SB 74 and replace anyone on the board who supports such divisive and contentious legislation. I will end with Matthew 25 verse 40. I tell you the truth. Whatever you did for one of the least of these, you did for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record and you'll have five minutes.
Tough act to follow, but as you know, my name is Karen Parham, 3421 Hilltop Trail in Evans. I'm talking to you as the chair and founder of the newly incorporated Freedom to Read Coalition of Columbia County. I brought this list of books that have been reclassified since 2024. The first three books on the list were reclassified before the guidelines were voted on by the commissioners. The rest of those titles were moved after. All of the ones highlighted in pink have LGBTQ content. So regardless of your intent when passing the guidelines, it has disproportionately affected those books. Also, over 90% of the books challenged in our county are challenged for LGBTQ content. Here's the thing. You own everything the library board does because you appoint the entire board. I sent you all an email back in October suggesting to make changes in the makeup of how the board is appointed. You ignored me, which is your right. However, you own it. They reflect on you. So when a board member takes it upon himself to go over to Atlanta to lobby for legislation that will jail librarians, who he is supposed to be advocating for, it brings up questions. When the same board member is also seen carrying a binder with a Greater Clarksville Regional Library logo on it, which presumably was their welcome binder, he takes it up to Atlanta with organizations that are also posting some controversial content, including anti-LGBTQ content, which adds more context to this list. It raises huge ethical red flags. Then we have other board members that are publicly commenting on media articles and signing petitions. I won't get into everything that I know, but some of your appointees are very publicly showing an outrageous amount of bias on the library board. At the very least, we as an organization are calling for Mr. Davis to step down from both the county and regional boards. I actually talked at length with Gary Richardson about SB 74. He brought up movie ratings. These folks trying to pick fights with books at the library want the books to be rated like movies. Here's the thing, though. The movie industry created the rating system. They support it and they fund it. It's very in-depth. A lot goes into those ratings. The publishing industry, along with professional reviews, gives recommended age ranges, and quite a bit goes into those recommendations as well. The problem is, though, that there are people in this community that don't agree with those age ranges. So what are they doing? They're coming to you to make the changes they want. It would be the same as if the movie industry rated a movie PG, but they are insisting they think it should be NC 17. And they're coming to you and wanting you to just have the movie theaters in Columbia County treat the PG-rated movie like it's NC 17. With SB 74, they are going to our lawmakers and saying they want to put the movie clerk in jail if they allow anyone under the age of 17 to watch the movie that is rated PG by the movie industry. But just in our county, right? And just for the movies that they don't like. Sounds crazy, right? Well, yeah, because it is. Anyway, the bottom line is this. Even though you found someone willing to implement the guidelines as a prerequisite for their employment, it doesn't make the guidelines right or legal. The guidelines are unconstitutional, and chances are SB 74 is as well. And your library is not going to be the best in the state as long as you are pushing this stuff. We already aren't taking advantage of everything we could and pines because of all of this ridiculousness. Please, have your appointees repeal the guidelines and stop with the nonsense. I'm sure there are more people in this county that prefer you to focus on infrastructure projects and debris removal than some political takeover of the public library hell-bent on curating the children's sections to only reflect one political religious worldview. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, while I appreciate the ladies' commitment to the issue and I appreciate their enthusiasm for the topic, I, this one, I actually have some of these books here. One of them picked up. Let me just, I'm not gonna put it in everybody's face because there are children here, but let me tell you something. There are some pictures in some of the books that had been intended to be showed for our children's section. If I took a picture of this and handed it to one of these children, one of these little Boy Scouts out in the park, it would put me in jail. It's not okay. Now, there are some items. Would you like me to describe? Let me describe. This is a picture of somebody.
If you would like to comment, you need to sign up with the clerk.
This is a picture.
Otherwise, we'll have order.
Of somebody, a young boy performing fellatio. Multiple pictures, cartoons and drawings. If I took this picture, I've asked the sheriff and the DA, if I took this picture. Because now, because we made it an adult book, it was intended for the children's section. It's a cartoon. This has no business being in the children's section. It's not now.
Thank you, Commissioner Malier.
I'm sorry. I apologize for the disruption.
We will move on to the executive session. We have four items that we will take care of here and now. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from C2 and R1 to CC for property located at tax map 068, parcel 095A and 096.
That's a motion.
You're on that one.
Oh, I apologize.
Your executive session motion?
Yes, I'm so sorry. I make a motion to approve $15,000 to Marie Henin, parcel 060044. $33,000 to Orville and Gemma Lake, parcel 067097. $16,500 to Gordon and Lana Johnson, parcel 072B055. $12,000 to Larry and Mary Mack, parcel 072B054. And $11,600 to Betty Burge, parcel 072B054. to Larry and Mary Mack, parcel 072B054, and $11,600 to Betty Burge, parcel 072B043, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Second.
These are our standard negotiations for the Hereford Farm Road project. We are now at 64% complete.
I have a motion and second on the floor, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. I make a motion to approve Resolution 25-11, Declaration of Taking an Order by Condemnation for a Portion of Tax Map 067C382 and 067C071, for the Improving Widening, Paving, Aligning, and Maintaining of Hereford Farm Road.
Second.
These parcels are both owned by Farmington Estates Property Owners Association, so we are calling this a friendly condemnation. The negotiation went fine, however, they don't have the authority to sign the documents based on their, their rules, their bylaws, they require 75% of the HOA, I believe, to approve it, so this will allow the court system to clear that on their behalf.
Questions? I have a motion and second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I make a motion to approve $12,800 to Donald and Kathy Wadner, parcel 062037, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Chamberlain Horizon Connector Project.
Second.
This is an easement along the, along Chamberlain Road to allow for our slope tie-in, so we have one more parcel to negotiate, and that is the one large parcel.
I have a motion and second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I make a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Willeen Satcher as executor of the estate of William W. Satcher, Columbia Road Professional Center Owners Association Inc., and Purewood Investment Corporation.
Second.
Let Mr. Driver.
Uh, you want to take it? Take one.
This is a stormwater-related suit, uh, for a washout that happened, uh, off of Columbia Road. This is some years ago, got all the way up to the Supreme Court of Georgia, backed down, um, in the effort of, uh, or in the interest of ending the litigation and moving forward, all parties have come to this settlement agreement, which is $100,000, half of which will be paid by ACCG, the other half by the county, and then also, uh, the county would be getting stormwater easement from the property owner, uh, giving us the right to form water on their property.
Any questions? I have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Motion carries. One more motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned.